How are you?
Good.
Go ahead.
You must want to ask him if it's gonna be all right.
Oh, yeah, really.
I mean, you know.
Did he?
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, I'm not doing that either. I'm gonna make the motion again about closing the meeting. Are you all ready? Okay, unmute, we're ready. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the closed meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? I would also like to make a motion to reconvene the regular meeting. Do we have a second for that? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that council did not discuss anything in the closed meeting other than the item for which it was convened. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? So for those in attendance or watching online, we did have a closed session at 5:30 regarding a personnel matter, and we are beginning our regular meeting now. So at this point in time, we will call our regular meeting to order, and we'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see anybody here to lead us, so I would be happy to lead us. If you all will please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. If you will take this moment to join us in a moment of silence where you can pray silently, prepare for the meeting, or gather your thoughts for the business of the city. Thank you all very much. At this time, we will open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. We'll ask that you please come down to the podium, state your name for the record, use the microphone that's there, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. The floor is now open, and you can observe your time on the clock. We're getting it set right there. It's three seconds right now, so. Hang on one second, Guy, we don't, we only have, well, hold on. I got you here too, so. Technology, it's wonderful. There we go, all right.
All right. Guy Wood from here in the city. I have a request. I normally like to watch the meetings online, but I'm having some problem hearing everyone. You guys have buttons to turn yourselves off and on? I wish you'd just leave them on all the time, and then we wouldn't have to worry about that, 'cause when you get the nod that they're off and you turn it on, you don't forget to start from the beginning. You start where you left off, so we miss, you know, the first part of whatever you've got to say. So, you know, that would be helpful a lot if you could do it. The other thing is, when you have a guest or a person here at the podium, I haven't been able to see them. I understand we have a camera that will show them, and, you know, when you hear them, you kinda like to see the person. You might meet the person out on sidewalk one day and recognize a face but not remember the name, and said, "Oh, I saw you, and I liked what you had to say." So it would be nice if you could get the camera on the speaker when they're speaking. So if you could work those two things out for me, I'd appreciate it, and I think other people would too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen who has a comment on the public matter?
Not sure it's a public matter. I'm Kenny Ford, one of the owners of New River City Campground.
Hang on one quick second, we're getting your timer set.
I've only got thirty minutes, I promise you.
That's okay, I just wanna be fair. I got you, go ahead, Kenny.
All right. Again, I'm Kenny Ford, we're the owners of New River City Campground, or New River City Retreat, I'm not sure what the official name is yet, but we have a couple companies there with that. Council Lady Foster inquired about it at the last meeting. I just wanted to come and give you all an update as to where we are and where we're going. Where we are now is the engineering plans are complete, they have been to the city for a review, we have received comments back. The city has been wonderful to work with up to this point, and I'm sure will continue as that. The silt fence and erosion controls are in place, we're starting to remove some of the trees that are, we have to remove for the sites. We're trying to limit that as much as possible, however, some of them have to go. We have the sub-certification in place and to the city. The Army Corps has issued some of its permits already, DEQ has issued some of their permits already. Again, I just wanted to say the city staff has been great to work with. We hope to start grading next week, and again, we're not sure how long it's gonna take to build this project. We'd like to be open next year, May or June, but we'll see how that goes. You know, it's gonna depend a whole lot on the weather this winter, but we're excited about it, we're excited about being able to fill this thing up for Radford events, bring more people into Radford. I think, as we said before, with the place we have in Hillsville, it does a lot for the community and the community, the council, the county is very helpful to us in what we do, and we provide for a lot of extra tax base to come in. We have about twenty thousand stays a year up there, and we use a whole lot of water and a whole lot of electric, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to attempt to answer them. I've got fifty-one seconds left.
Thank you, sir, you've got fifty seconds left, or forty-eight.
I just wanted to thank you for the update, and if you wouldn't mind, as you hit some milestones, if you would come back in and just let us know how you're progressing and how everything's going for you, I think that'd be beneficial.
Sure will, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the update.
Okay, are there any other comments, anyone else who would like to share something for the record? Seeing no one else coming to the podium, we will close that portion of the meeting. Council members, you may notice that Mr. Ridpath is not with us this evening, he is under the weather, but we are gonna continue to move forward, and we wish him well to feel better soon. We do have minutes from August 12th and September 9th. Do we have any changes to those minutes, or do we have a motion to accept as submitted? We have a motion to accept the meeting's minutes from August 12th and September 9th as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Well, folks, we have some exciting things to talk about this evening. Public Power Week, and boy, we sure do depend on our public power folks here in the city of Radford. The week of October 6th through October 12th, 2024 is Public Power Week, and it's a nationally established week to recognize electric employees, the importance and power in building strong communities, two thousand community-owned utilities across the country, as well as the significance of reliable power. And we know that here in Radford, that the Radford Electric Department does a tremendous job in helping keep us with the lights on and to be sustainable fully in the city in all kinds of ways. So we do have a proclamation, and Seth, I believe you have that for us this evening.
City of Radford Proclamation, Public Power Week. Whereas the Radford Electric Department provides our homes, businesses, social service agencies, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible services. And whereas, the Radford Electric Department is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service reliability, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas, the Radford Electric Department is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many customer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work by providing reliable power services. And whereas, the Radford Electric Department will continue to work to bring safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses. And whereas, the employees at the Radford Electric Department are dedicated to providing Radford residents and businesses with reliable electric service, and they prove this by coming out to fix power in all weather conditions. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Radford does hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Public Power Week throughout this city, with the theme being powering our community's future, and recognizes the Radford Electric Department for its contributions to the community. Radford City Council encourages customers and employees to learn more about the benefits of public power and all it entails to provide reliable electric service to all customers. Council, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
I moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Bobby, you can be our second then. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations. We want to say a big thank you to the Radford Electric Department, I think they deserve a round of applause, even though they're not able to be with us this evening. Typically, power doesn't go out on a beautiful afternoon in September or May, it goes out in the middle of the night, it goes out in the middle of winter, it goes out on the hottest day of the year, and they're out there taking care of us, and we are so thankful for that, and we want to pass along that appreciation for Public Power Week. October 6th through 12th is also nationally recognized as Fire Prevention Week, and we have a proclamation that endorses Fire Prevention Week in Radford encouraging recognition of the important week by promoting smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, as well as fire safety at home, at work, in our schools, in our forests. Bobby, I think you have a proclamation for us this evening.
City of Radford Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. Whereas, the city of Radford is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in, visiting our city, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than twenty-seven hundred people in, you know, twenty-seven hundred people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and sixty thousand home fires, whereas roughly three out of five deaths happen in homes with either no working smoke alarms or no smoke, or no smoke alarm, and whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, Radford residents should install fire alarms, I mean, smoke alarms, in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, Radford residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, the city of Radford first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education, and whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make You Work For You, That Make Them Work For You, serves to remind us the importance of having smoke alarms in the home. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Radford does hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Radford, and urges all the people of Radford to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms, and to support the public's, the many public safety activities and efforts of Radford's Fire and Emergency Services. I would like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, we have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we have some members of our fire department here, come on down if you all would to accept this, and please let us, give us a round of applause here. Counsel, come on down. The month of October is also nationally designated as Arts and Humanities Month, and it recognizes the importance of the arts in the economy, quality of life, civic life, tourism, education, and entertainment. We do have a proclamation recognizing the importance of the arts here in the city of Radford. Jesse?
Proclamation, October 2024, National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas, the arts and humanities are the embodiment of all things beautiful and entertaining in the world, and in the enduring record of human achievement, and whereas, the arts and humanities enhance every aspect of life in the city of Radford, improving our economy, enriching our civic life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas, arts education research shows that the arts help to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of beauty and cross-cultural understanding. And whereas, we use the humanities, history, literature, and philosophy to explore what it means to be human, and whereas, the arts and humanities play a unique and intrinsically valuable role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our state. And whereas, the month of October has been recognized as the National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, community, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the council of the city of Radford, Virginia, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month, and does call upon the citizens of Radford to celebrate, explore, and participate in the arts and culture of the city of Radford. Council, I, and Mayor, I would recommend that we accept this proclamation.
We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations to everybody that works to bring us more beauty in our lives, more meaning, more cultural value with the arts and humanities. Over the next month, you will have a significant opportunity to explore music, and theater, and dance, and all kinds of wonderful opportunities with events going on across the city of Radford, so I think it'll be a great, great partnership for that in the month of October, so thank you very much. Council members, we have two boards that we need to consider for old business, but I will offer this up. I know for at least the Tourism Commission, staff is working on some additional pieces for that, and we're not ready for an appointment there. I believe the same for the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Development Board. Does anybody have a suggestion? Are we good to wait until staff gets back to us with their additional pieces on that? So we will table that, and Jenny, if you'll just put that back on the agenda, I don't think it needs to be at the next meeting, but how about the second October meeting? I think we'll be ready to have some discussion then.
Hold on, look at me. If citizens are interested in that board, reach out to me, we'll be happy to put that out there, I think that one's.
That sounds good. Thank you very much. Under new business, we need to talk a little bit about the Radford High School Foundation lease extension, the property on George Street adjacent to the Radford Recreation Center. The city has leased that property for the last twenty years to the Radford High School Foundation. The agreement was established to help foster support, private donations, and construction of the baseball field on the five-acre city-owned site. The original lease was for a five-year term, renewed in September 2008, under new conditions for another five-year term, renewed in October 2014 for one year, in October 2015 for two years, and in October 2017 for three years, which expired December 31st, 2020. The foundation has been requesting additional renewal terms of one year since 2020 to continue fundraising and project development. They've requested another extension to December of 2025, and the lease has worked out well with the facility management, maintenance, and development of that property. Council, do we have a motion to move forward with the extension of the lease until December 2025 with the resolution authorizing that agreement? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. We will continue working on that ballfield with the Radford High School Foundation, that sounds good. Community Development Block Grant, that is an important aspect to the city of Radford. The Virginia Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, known as the CAEPER, for the city be available for public comment. The fiscal year 2023-2024 has, report has been prepared as required, and illustrates project funding for emergency home repairs, recreational facility improvements, subrecipients, beautification enhancements, homeless intervention programs, as well as economic development enhancement. A comprehensive program was implemented with $255,683 in CDBG funding. The CAEPER is available for inspection at the library and city administration and the city website. Melissa, do you have anything you want to add?
This is basically our report to HUD saying that we did actually follow the action plan that we put.
So for those who might not have been able to hear, that is our report to HUD based that on what we did, that we said we were going to do, they will return it back to us with any comments they might have, and we'll move forward from there. So this is just an announcement of that plan. Council members, we have a request for a vacation of a right-of-way on a portion of the property located between Ninth Avenue and Prospect Street in Monroe Terrace. A map is coming up here on the screens, the request is for seventeen hundred square feet to expand property lines and area as adjacent property owners. As of now, there is no impact to the utilities or existing open roadway, and an application fee has been paid. Public hearing is required and can be held on October 14th. So council, there is the site, Jenny, can you? Yeah, I was gonna say, can you point that out? You could barely see it in the red, on the green there, it's right in the exact center. It's basically sort of an intermediate site between multiple properties there. So we would need to schedule a public hearing for October 14th, which is our next regular city council meeting. Any questions from anybody? Do we have a motion to schedule the public hearing for October 14th?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much. City of Radford received one thousand seven hundred, excuse me, one thousand seven, man, my numbers are off, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars in Community Development Block Grant funds from the Virginia Department of Housing and Urban Development. The funds follow the 2024 Action Plan approved by city council last April, April 22nd, 2024. These funds will support planning, administration, emergency home repair, facade improvements, water and sanitary sewer system improvements on Seventeenth Street, beautification efforts, planning, and improvements to the East Main Street and Third Avenue parking lots, as well as continued support of our subrecipient programs, which include New River Community Action, the Women's Resource Center, the Bobcat Backpack Program, Radford Daily Bread, and Radford Clothing Bank. So Appropriation Ordinance 1802.12 allows for that allocation. Council members, do you have any questions, comments on the plan that was approved back on April 22nd? Do we have a motion to approve Appropriation Ordinance 1802.12 in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion, do we have a second? Bobby, thank you. A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And looking at Appropriation Ordinance 1802.13, it is $2,500 in triad funding that the sheriff's office has received through the attorney general's office to buy and distribute residential lock boxes for senior citizens. The amount of $2,500 requires no local match. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1802.13 in the amount of $2,500? We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired, do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Well, as I said, Mr. Ridpath isn't with us this evening, he's a little bit under the weather, but he has made comments that he's given to Jenny. Jenny, if you will please share those comments, anything else you want to share with us?
Yes, Mr. Ridpath isn't feeling well, so he just wanted me to point out, the paving on East Main is complete, that job is done, they're just working on striping, we're not sure exactly when that's gonna happen, and then that same company is moving to West Main to work on that section of the road as well.
Actually.
Section is that, do you know, just so we can, sorry?
They were working on it last night, it is right where the city goes from, to the highway, the divided highway.
For the four lanes part.
To the four lanes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a very long section, they were working on it last night.
I wanna say like 232, but. And then, Timmy Litton and I met today in Triangle Plaza to determine a location of the Peace Pole, so that's been marked off, so that should be moving forward. From there, not really that much else to report, we have, on October 12th, we have Radford Highlanders Festival coming up that day on campus, and then Kim has her last concert of the season, which is Chairman of the Board, that's been rescheduled, which will be up here. And then David, just wanted me to have Mike follow up on Comcast with you.
Probably a couple days after the city council approved the franchise agreement. David signed the agreement, I signed the agreement, it's been sent off to Comcast. It's usually a little bit of a longer turnaround when you send it to a corporation, but we should be receiving a fully signed copy soon, and I know that the construction team with, or the build-out team with Comcast has already had meetings with Tim Logwood. has already had meetings with Tim Logwood and his team as well. So that's the progress on that.
Thank you very much. All right, Jenny, you have anything else? Okay. Jessie, what do you have for us?
All right. So I have a little bit of old business. I just want to bring up again that I still would like us to, as a community, reach out to organizations, churches, nonprofits, to get their information on the web and also to have them present to us. So I'm gonna keep bringing these things back up, if I don't see those things happening. The other one is a corporate tour. I'd like to go to the next corporation for that. And we did do the Field of Honor closing ceremony, and it was so touching and so very well-attended. We had the RU Police Department, we had the Radford Police Department, we had our fire trucks with flags, we had the Sheriff's Department, medical personnel, we had the commander of the arsenal. I met her, she's real, she's amazing, it's Lieutenant Colonel Humphries. She also brought with her her emergency manager, three military police officers, and military police trucks. So I was very happy with their level of engagement. And also to let you guys know, on October 15th at 12:30, I will be with her, that we're gonna do a tour of about three hours. And if someone else would like to go, just let me know, because two of us can go, and you'd be more than welcome, love to have you.
I'd like to go.
You wanna go? Perfect, okay, I will make that happen. The other follow-up is, I did mention we are having a little issue with the Virginia Housing Authority. They had given us some timelines to remedy our voucher issue. I did write a letter, I included Delegate Ballard's office, and asked for an update because we were not following that schedule that they actually presented to us. They wrote us back saying, yes, we are correct. They have not lived up to that schedule, so we are gonna have another meeting to figure out what that means and a path forward. And I wanted to let you guys also know, I think because I basically wore down the commander of the arsenal-
Got a commander's coin.
She gave me a coin.
Oh.
That is such an honor.
It is a huge honor.
It's a huge honor.
I have one.
It's amazing. It's just, I can't tell you, my heart was full that day. It was just a great thing, and then to receive that. But like I said, I think it basically just wore her down, because as you guys know, that was my goal. I had someone on council ask me about the CPMT meeting that I mentioned, and what it stands for, is Community Policy and Management Team. And I thought I would let you guys know who was on it, because that's one of the questions, which was a good question. We have the CSA Coordinator, we have, let's see, someone from Radford City Schools, we have someone from District Court Services, City Council. We have a community member, which is often apparent representative. We have New River Community Services. We have the FAPT liaison. We have Strategic Therapy Associates as a private provider representative. We have Radford City Department of Social Services, and the New River Health District, the health department member. So that is all I have, and I wanted to make sure that I followed up with you guys on that.
Thank you very much. Kelly, what do you have for us this evening?
So like Jenny said, the Highlander Festival is on the 5th, and Chairman of the Board is on the 12th at 6 o'clock. That is our last concert series, so I hope everybody can come out to that. We have great weather. Also, don't forget to visit the farmer's market. They will be closing up shop on the 19th of October. I go down there quite often, and it's actually amazing place to get, you know, your produce and meats and things like that, just not the craft. So we really enjoy that. Thank you to Kenny and his sons for always having all the great information and working hard to make sure that that project is underway and completed properly. I hope you guys have a mild winter to make sure that it's meeting your goals for completion. We had a joint commission meeting a couple of days after our last council meeting. We are planning on updating our charter to make it more comprehensive and outline some of the goals that we wish to accomplish together. We have a lot of new members, both from the city side and the university side, so we are a lot more action-oriented, and I look forward to everything that we decide to accomplish in the future. We got some really great feedback from Community Fest, overwhelmingly positive. Definitely some ideas to improve on for next year, but it was a really great, well-attended, well-organized first Community Fest. So I was very proud of our team for that. I also got a few RU updates on totals of students. Don't quote me on these exact numbers, because I was writing them down pretty quickly, but I think that we have 5,927 students at RU, with a total population of 7,686, which includes 1,400-plus new students and 723 new transfer students. So that is definitely exceeding our numbers of what we thought a little bit. We're definitely happy that RU has worked really hard for those goals. Those students bring in, you know, meals and sales tax and, you know, revenue to our city, so it's always good to see RU thriving, because it helps our city as well, so. And I think that's all of I had. Go Bobcats, they had an undefeated game on Friday, so that was really exciting. And I think that's all that I have right now.
All right, thank you very much. Seth, what do you have?
Yeah, I don't have much tonight. I'll echo everything that's already been said about a lot of the things that are going on. Also wanted to thank our police department. I know they had a scary situation over the last couple of days, and they handled that with excellent professionalism, and, you know, they keep our streets safe, and we're lucky to have them, and this community is indebted. Thank you guys and women for all you do to make this a better place. The only other thing is, we also had a planning commission meeting. Melissa does a great job, and we are coordinating a meeting with the EDA so that we can kind of look at some of our zoning and make sure that we're hitting our targets, and specifically some of the property with the West Radford Commerce Park, and making sure that we work on that. So we have that coming up, and we're still working through our zoning rewrite that we are going, and we're getting there. So appreciate everybody on planning commissions work. We have a good group, and that's really all I have tonight.
All right, thank you, Seth. Bobby, what do you have?
Yeah, I just want to reach out to David Ridpath. I hope David gets well soon, and likewise, I'd like to recommend that everybody get out and hit the trails out there, and the parks, and you may need probably a rain-proof jacket while you're out there this week, but you can still enjoy it. And in relation to the police department, I was so impressed that they got through all the baloney and zeroed right into what was going on. And, you know, I know they encounter all kinds of people, and this lady was one of those kind. But anyway, great job, very impressed, they got right down to it. And I think that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you, Bobby. I'll echo what's been said about our PD. We appreciate all the hard work and the excellent police work that's taking place. And through technology and through some of the efforts of our officers, Radford is a safer place, and we are so appreciative of all of that. It does make a difference, and it makes a difference in the lives of the people that are encountered by our police officers. So you probably read the article in the newspaper, and there's a whole lot more to that as well. I did want to say that over the next month, there are a lot of events happening here in the city of Radford. There's activities with the Bobcat Theater Program. We also have Homecoming at Radford University on October 4th, 5th, and 6th. And on the afternoon of the 5th, there is a big concert on campus. I believe the Works are gonna be performing. That's a free concert that anyone can participate in, so you can come out, and that'll be on Moffett Field. Then the next Saturday, as has been mentioned, the Highlanders Festival, followed up that evening, that'll also be on Moffett Field, followed that evening by Chairman of the Board here at Glencoe. So lots of opportunities for arts and humanities in the month of October, as we had our proclamation this evening. Again, good things happening throughout the city. Please be an ambassador for our community and share those wonderful things as you see them. Early voting began last Friday, and folks can choose to vote at the Registrar's Office, at the Municipal Courthouse Building on Second Street. That voting is taking place from now until the weekend before Election Day. The specifics are on the website. We are expecting a little bit of weather in the next couple of days, thunderstorms and the like, and there's another tropical system moving in our direction. And I wanted to use that as an opportunity to remind folks to sign up for the Smart 911 system. And Jenny, if you'll post another piece about that, that's how you'll get information about what's happening in the city, about what's going on, if there's an alert that needs to go out, and this is a great time to do that. Do you have the latest numbers? The last I had was about 4,000. I don't know if we've had significantly more since then.
I can check those and get them to you, I haven't looked at those in a while.
We want to get as many people as possible. We've got 16,000 people living in this community. We need 16,000 people signed up for these alerts, because this is how you know what's going on in the city, and it's a really important piece, so. And with that, we will accept a motion to adjourn for the evening. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say goodnight.
Goodnight.